Good morning.
Let's call the name.
It's Monday, April 11th, 2022. It's a little bit after 10 o'clock and this is a regular commissioner court to call it order. And we're going to open it up with Brother Joe Miller doing our invitation.
Let's make some sound wave while we thank you for what is paid and deeply expected. We thank you that all of us can be here. We pray for each individual here that you would guide us and direct us in accomplishing what would be pleasing in your sight. And that this meeting will go well and most importantly, we will serve the people of Newton County. Jesus name we pray.
We call me order and we have a quarrel here this morning to acknowledge any guests here today and we'll open it up for public hearing. Mr. Powell, I see that you're on Agenda 21. And would you like to talk now or wait till the agenda comes up?
I would rather wait.
All right, I'll call you. I'll call you. All right, anymore? Not with close of public hearing, we'll go to a consent agenda. We are missing several reports. So if the one, the reports is not in there, we're not approving. Your second.
My second.
Motion been made by Mr. Fongby, second by Mr. White, that we accept the consent agenda. No discussions, so all in favor say aye. Same poll, same sign of poll. Hear none, pass. Number two is to deliberate and consider action on the following items. Number one is prevent Newton Food Share 2021 annual report. Mr. Joe.
First, I want to extend greetings to everyone from the Newton Food Share. I hope you'll notice our new shirt, which was formed by volunteers when we're actually serving people. And we have a lot of really good volunteers that always, it's an honor to work with them. But I thank the administration of Newton County for providing so much for us. Location is key on Main Street. But the last several years, we have got a lot of support, lots of people here that we've done has been with a lot of help from Newton County. We're now utilizing a twelve, eleven, walking freezer inside, no ability, so you don't see it. And having used that for need, it's been a big help because we're at that cage, not even recently, but anyway, cage where we have the opportunity to get a lot of meat which we don't distribute in order. A cage would be better if we could move down, check out something like that, we're a big family. We couldn't do that before. You also may have known that by the way, I'm a simple parent nation. It's also a hard on for a freezer. Well, it could be a freezer, but it's cool. And you, during by the scene in, it came out forty feet by eight feet, makes a huge amount of noise. And but we've been utilizing outdoor produce from the hub for the area currently, also supplying Von Weir and Burtville Food Bank. That's been a big help. There's a lot of that that you've gotten has been absolutely free, which is a big help for the community. We have a community that's in progress. And the good thing about that is that's part of another government grant and somewhere other than the pocket, anybody can come get that. And there's no obligation. All of it is just you need, we got it. We started in 2004, which is a little upset, ten years ago. And I think I say this every year, every, I've never been licensed once in a while ago. And I would say we've been blessed. We've had a lot of different ways, but it's also that blessing. We've never went elsewhere, never. We haven't as much as we'd like to have, but we have. In the first year that we operated, we had 672 individuals, practically 211. Now, this measures have taken, they show what we've done over the years since 2017. We have gone up. This past year, we averaged 284 families a month, representing about, this is all average, about 730.5, 100.5 of a person, anybody, that's what it came down. And there's actually two and a half people per family, which has gone up a little bit. And first started, it's mostly old folks. Now we see a lot of children. For us, we are thinking for our better life. That's important. They get fed in school, some, and some get fed in others, some have backpacking. But you're not going to do anything in education yourself if you're hungry. And food is basic. Which also been fascinating has been the demographics. When we started, and I bring this up, it's in the report, we're in about 50/50 African-American and Caucasian, very, very, that's big for things, that's not a surprise. It's now changing quite a bit and we're 56% Caucasian and 40% African-American, that's just our need, because I worry, and I don't want to work on that this year, that we're not reaching all the African-Americans that we should be. And I intend to address that. I have feelings about what it might be that I don't want to say because I don't have data. I will gather data. We averaged about 31 volunteers a month. And that includes the river church over in Maryville that comes over and packs for us and Cindy McPhail, the day school that she does, and they pack another day. We distributed about 10,000, about 10,500 pounds of food per month. And the hub this past year, on top of that, was almost 240,000 now over the whole, over the year. It would have been more in both cases. We had a drop off in basically the wrong time of the year. At Christmas and Easter, not Christmas, at Thanksgiving, we just supply chain. It's everything. You try to get something, you might wait six months for it. Well, they had the same issue. And I hate it because Christmas and Thanksgiving were a little bit lean. We had food, like I said, sometimes we had more than the other. Our actual distribution was down to 2021 versus 20, and now it's caused COVID. In 20, there's a lot of extra distributions done because of COVID and the big freeze and, you know, a lot of things happened. We haven't received a grant for a generator to run the freezer and the cooler, which right now if we lose power, they go down. And we want to be sure we have a freezer full of meat. We want to be able to still have it and also we still be able to give it out. And if that came from a parent, which I don't know why they use that name, because their other name is Evan. And I hear the name Evan, oh yeah, who's the guy that they call him? So we'll probably work on that. Work on them again to get more money, anyway. During the coming year, we opened a building, new building, for several reasons. One, the old ones fall apart. And plumbing bad, electrical bad, everybody's ever been in an old hospital room, in the 50s when it was built. I know there have been people that were born there. I think Mike Gird is right old enough, we were probably born there. Some of the younger ones may now remember. But it was great then and it's not so great now. And it's a, it's like a bass boat, or what I've heard about a bass boat. Bass boat is something that sits in the water and drinks the whole, and that's where you draw all your money. Well, that's what's happened with that old building. So working on a plan, I've got Mark Bean's help together, budget, local construction guy, mayor of Illinois. And I'm working with Southeast Texas Food Bank on preparing a proposal for a grant. And all these things we've gotten with county support have been grants. And I'm confident that us being the county that we are, you know that, that the money to help feed people, I don't think it's going to be hard to get, but it's going to take some work. And I've been down this path before, even in a previous life. You can apply for a grant, you apply for money, they turn you down, they want to say, oh well, you just say, okay, now who else can I get for the money to get this done? It'll also give us the ability to serve meals. And I talked to Red of South Asian Army, they're interested that they could, it'd be something they could use that when there's a, of course, hurricanes never come up this far. I was told that in 2004. And I, you know, I know y'all wouldn't like to, so, but it did happen. And we have land here, UPS, people doing recovery, we would have a place to put this like job, go have a first-class kitchen for Captain Pearson and not vice commercial break. And so it'll do a lot for county in supporting the people. And that's, that's what it's about. I'm chewing on my tongue, people moving into a sermon, I guess alone because Michael would put in the rough anyway, but to me, that's what it's about as a Christie community. We also call out some people that we've got a lot of help from. Lake City Brewers, probation office, Southeast Texas Food Bank, Newton County Library, Shady Acres, Rookshire, Jasper Moon Electric Co., Pine Gold Backs, and First Baptist Church in Newton. And we've got funding from the Emergency Food and Shelter Program behind the way, which is a government deal. And we all get money from that every year, including the other, the other food bank. So financially, we're in great shape. A reminder, absolutely nobody gets paid, well, unless you count your shirt. But it's all volunteer, we have great volunteers, we can always use more. Our total food distributed within the hub, probably everything, was 365, that's 66,000 pounds, which is 183 tons. Of course, being like I am, that's not enough. More food from more people. Thank you very end question. Is everybody asleep? Okay. Good. I'm up. Thank you.
There is one question. You said there was 31 volunteers, is that just in, in your hub or does that include Hughes and Burtville also?
That's a good question. That's a hub and that's Newton Food Share. It is not the other two food shares. That's their own thing. And I've invited them, they come do the same thing, because I don't want to steal this. They thought it was great stuff, both of them. Burtville, found its solid business product up there. Nice facility, great facility. Von Weir are doing a great job and they're doing things over beyond food. But it is kind of early for them to come. They've been in it a couple of years, like maybe a little word of great storm to have it over here to decide whether, you know, come before this offish bottom with what they've been doing. They've been doing a great job and they have all the years also. So a lot of people involved, Trail Creek, which is a little bit further south, but it's in one of the district districts here, increasing whatever. I never been to that district. And they're doing a good job. So the support for them, yes sir.
Yes, thank you. Is there a hub in the south part of the county, Deweyville?
There is not that I'm aware of, I suspect. And of course, we have people coming to Deweyville, it's not worth, that's a four dollars a gallon, come all the way up to Newton or Trail Creek there. But let's say they do. My understanding is there you're going to warn.
There is one in Deweyville.
There is?
Yes.
There is one?
Yes, and they, they distribute food once a month, I believe. And there's volunteers that do that.
Okay. Where is that? Where's that at? That's at the Baptist Church.
That's right across from the old elementary school, right across from the hospital. I'm at the hospital, the post office.
I know it, I know it. Thank you.
And to finish up what Brother Joe taught, Burtville feeds about 120 families a month.
And about the same.
And Deweyville is about 70 to 85.
When we first started Burtville, it was only doing about 25 or 30 people, but now it's up to 120 pretty consecutive, about 120 families a month now. So it's grew over the last year or so. And it, and it operates on volunteers too, like Brother Joe talks about. And it needs some volunteers.
Yes, they do. And we always, we have, in the past, taken community workers, which like work, that are probationary, doing community service, so we get, we get those.
I appreciate Brother Joe and I really like that shirt, and if you got an extra one.
Fire.
I said, I really like that shirt.
Oh, thank you. Well, the other one, we might as well rock another one.
I've got a good name on it, Judge.
Okay, thank you.
By the way, I got to mention this lady that happens, who's a carer, who really is a brand company out there. She's a doctor.
I think you can have that. But I'm sorry.
We appreciate all the work that y'all provide, especially the service y'all provide to the local people and throughout the county. And I think y'all deserve it. So, thank y'all. Okay, item number two is to present steer update, Mr. Olin Bean.
I don't know if y'all got this in your pack of your month. You know, steer is our state of Texas emergency assistance registry, which the county participates It's been in the past that those folks registered through 211, and if they need assistance then during evacuation, mandatory evacuation, then it's the county's responsibility to evacuate those folks. And so through some legislations, I know y'all like unfunded mandates, Senate Bill 968 in our last session of our state legislature, they added some more to the steer. Under that, they call it a wellness check. And in the first part there that I've got highlighted at the bottom of the page, it lists some of the things that they want each jurisdiction to check on. If you'll turn over to the second page, in the middle of the page, in bold black, and I've got it highlighted as well, it says, we shall have a plan? Yeah, shall. And then at the very bottom there, I've got some stuff highlighted, that TDM will audit us and make sure that we are following our plan, that we are doing wellness checks. And like I said, in the past, on the folks that were registered, we divided those up according to what precinct they lived in. And as long as we could make a phone call with them, you know, that was the way we tried to handle everything. If there was no answer, we could not get a hold of them, then the commissioner would send somebody to that residence to make sure they were evacuated or they had a plan to leave or they had transportation, whatever that is. Under the state's plan, new guidance, I must do an automated call to these individuals. I must do a phone call, a personal phone call. And Ginger and Christie have agreed to help me with that. But if we do not make contact with either one of those, then somebody has to make a personal visit to that residence to make sure they're okay, just wellness check. And they've added some things, not just our mandatory evacuation anymore, if there's, they call it an extended power outage. And that's going back and forth in the legislation, there was not a timeframe on that. And so between TDM, Department of State Health Services and Health and Human Services and the author of the legislation, they're kind of trying to come up with a timeframe on that. But also tornadoes, disaster evacuations, any of those other lists there. And within the legislations, this, this wellness check has to be done within 24 hours. So there's a very short timeframe of that. And so this is just information, had all the commissioners here together, wanted to kind of give y'all this, let you kind of digest it a little bit. Like I said, in the past, we've divided these folks up according to what precinct they live in. And so some will have more than the other commissioner on that. But most of the time, I think during Laura, we only evacuated nine people. So we've got 58 on the list now, but a majority of those have their own transportation and it actually comes down to an evacuation. Power outage, tornado, something else like that, those numbers are not going to go away. So we're going to be looking at some help there to make these. The other part of that, again, as I said in that last paragraph, they're going to check up on us and so it's going to have to be documented. If you send a guy out to somebody's house to check on them, we're going to need to document who you went to, the date and the time, since we're on a 24-hour timeframe there, and what the result was. Were they gone? Were they home? They're okay, whatever that is. And I'll try and fix up just a pretty brief blog and email that to each one of y'all's secretaries where you'll have that then to use to document that. Get that information to me so that I can keep a yearly file on our steer programs.
Olin, do we know the needs of each one of these steer persons?
Yes.
So if one of them was on oxygen and the prior was down and anticipated?
Well, I, I say yes. There are a lot of health questions that's in the original questionnaire, and they've added some since they've added this, this part to the jurisdictions. But if they do not want to answer those questions, they do not have to. It's voluntary. And most of them do, you'll have some that will have an NA, you know, they won't answer. And, and I've shown Christie that list, it's a spreadsheet that's probably about six feet wide with all the questions, everything on it, that health questions. And not only health questions, you remember on our evacuation, if they've got pets, we can't turn them down, we have to take the pets, all their medical equipment, wheelchair, oxygen generators, canes, walkers, all of that kind of information that's on there as well. Whether they, you know, are bedridden is even on there.
So you said you had to carry the animals with them? Are we prepared to carry the animals? I mean?
That's one of the questions, do they have a pet taxi? If not, we work with the agri life and try and get some of those pet taxis in here where that they can't carry those animals with them, they can't carry them loose, that's one of the restrictions, they have to be in a cage sometime to be hauled. I don't think our last evacuation, we had no animals, so that I can remember. We had one lady, one lady that had severe medical problems and the state plan is that they do not stay local. We got an ambulance over here at the center and that lady went all the way to San Antonio. That's the state's plan. They have a, a medical hub that's at San Antonio, no matter where you are in the state, if there's a medical need, they send them to San Antonio.
And that needs to be worked on.
We've argued the point, that's, that's just too much travel, I think, but.
Well, we had to wait, what, four, five hours, six hours?
Well, they, they didn't send the right ambulance. They sent a transport, not an ambulance, and the person needed an ambulance.
So how does that information get updated? I mean, if conditions change or someone new?
They can register through 211 up until 24 hours before landfall for tropical storm or hurricane. The two, the 24 hours is before tropical storm force winds make landfall. They stop taking those names. So anybody can register, if it's just during the year, there are no storms, you know, anybody can register through 211. This, this is the handbook they sent me.
I've been through it. I've lived it.
Yes, some changes, just want y'all to be aware of that.
Okay, let's go right into the SWF 911.
All right, got this email here, oh, several weeks back. All right, got this email here, oh, several weeks back. Uh, thought to report me about it because, uh, we do have a contract with SWIFT Reach, which is a parent company of our emergency notification. And we really don't, uh, she didn't think we needed to take any action on it. Uh, the carriers for our emergency notification, that's Verizon, AT&amp;T, Sprint, those deals, are updating their requirements for emergency notifications July the 1st. They're going from what they call a short code, which is seven numbers, going to a long code, which is 10. And in order for us to do non-emergency, and that would be our, our phone calls to, uh, our, our STEER registrants, they, they won't be able to do it. And so in order to do non-emergency and our emergency notifications, we have to upgrade to what they're calling rave alert. And they're willing to do that at no cost for the rest of the year. Uh, it'll just mean I'll have to learn a, a new system. Our alerts that go out to the citizens should stay the same, out to our residents. My only concern is they're doing it for the, this six months. Uh, with SWIFT Reach, our contract runs from January to December, and I'm not sure we'll get it for free next year. We may have to, uh, just put some money in our budget, uh, for an increase, even though we don't know. Hopefully by the budget time, I can have some information from them, whether they're going to charge us next year for the rave alert.
They, they know before budget time?
Yes, uh, once this is kind of, y'all, you know, know what's going on here. I have a webinar set up with a lady, and she's going walking through everything, all the changes and stuff, and they'll give me the opportunity then to see, uh, whether this, uh, process is going to stay the same basically, or whether we're looking at an increase.
Thank you, Olin. Number four is to accept and approve, uh, appropriately approve, uh, Mr. Claus Gert to replace, uh, Eugene Rambo as commissioner and, and, uh, Bubba Johnson acting as an alternate for Newton County Emergency Service District, number four. And, uh, Olin, would you present? There, there's no such thing as an alternate?
Well, uh, under the legislation that created emergency service districts, there is no, uh, clause, nothing in that far, an alternate. You, you appoint five commissioners, and it's five commissioners whether they show up for the meetings or not. Uh, there's no proxy, uh, or no alternates.
So we wouldn't, wouldn't be accepting, uh, an alternate for, for this service district?
Yes.
So we're just going to approve Claus?
Yeah.
I make that motion.
Motion made by Mr. Farmby, second by Mr. White, that we approve, uh, Mr. Claus as to replace Eugene Rambo as a commissioner in, uh, Newton County Service District, number four. Is any discussion? All papers say aye?
Aye.
Same sound, opposed? Hearing none? Pass. Number five, discuss and appropriate authorized Jasper Newton Health District to collaborate with the Jasper Newton District Hospital District in forming the Southeast Texas Health Partnership. Mr. Greer?
What we're basically asking for is your permission to co-invent negotiations with the hospital district in Jasper and forming this partnership to, basically what we want to do is, who's the health department in Jasper from where it is now to the old Harry Dickerson Hospital? That, that's the whole purpose of the partnership, is to get the building, the, the hospital district owns that building, and they want to partner with the health department because of our ties with the TLL Temple Foundation, who is willing to enhance all of the reg- herbishing and the new equipment and all to move the health department. So basically, what we're just asking, we're permission to talk about.
Is it going to be any future financial burden on us, or?
No, no, we're, Newton, yeah, it won't. All the expenses, well, no more than we currently spend on health department. It's what, $29,000 dollars a year or something that the county contributes. That, that, that won't change, and Newton County doesn't have to give up any of that. We're not giving up any sort of herbuses over here. It's basically, we're having to ask for this because of how the health department is, and, uh, both commissioner courts control the health department. And, uh, Asper this morning has this same idol there, just ended up. And, uh, so, you know, it's just, we just need permission to act.
This is, we're just entering and giving, authorizing y'all to enter a discussion, which we move forward.
Right, yeah. And then if you do formal party, we'll come back to.
If there was ever an agreement of any type, then we would enter into that agreement. But right now, we're just giving you authorization to enter into that.
Right.
Okay.
Well, I think you need to move out of that building.
Oh, ain't need it.
Yes.
I think that all.
For any of y'all that ain't never been in that Jasper Newton Health building, y'all need to go see.
It's pitiful.
It's pitiful.
It is.
Oh, it's awful.
Yes.
Absolutely.
I make that motion.
Motion made by Mr. Farmby and second by Mr. Benson, that we authorize the Jasper Newton Health District to enter into, uh, discussion with Jasper Hospital District to form the Ja- uh, Southeast Texas Health Partnership. Any discussion? Not all papers say aye?
Aye.
Same sound, opposed? Hearing none? Pass. Discuss and appropriate approve, uh, cooperative agreement between Te- uh, Texas A&amp;M AgriLife Extension Service in Newton County. This agreement is for five years and outlines the county's law editorial understanding, uh, between Newton County and AgriLife. Ms. Pearson?
All of you, I believe, have a copy of the, um, cooperative agreement between A&amp;M Extension, AgriLife Extension and the county. And I'm going to quickly go through these points of agreement. The first point is, um, it's, the agreement is, the period is between January 1st, 2022, and August 31st, 2026. It'll be a five-year agreement, renew each year automatically. And, um, uh, Extension and the counties in Texas have had a long time relationship. And this agreement is just a written agreement. It's always been verbal, and they wanted to get it in writing so everybody knows what, what it is all about. And, uh, it's nothing more than what the county already does, has already done for us through Extension. Point two, um, talks about allocating funds to have the county extension office here in Newton. Salaries, uh, office equipment, travel, a, a building, uh, things such as that is what the county does. Point three, um, is that we yearly will, uh, look over our salary and make increases if you would like to. Uh, point four, um, Extension will provide educational work in the county, and the areas that we do that are agriculture, family consumer science, 4-H youth development, and community development. Point five, AgriLife Extension also, um, provides specialists in areas of ex- different expertise. I know there are several specialists working now with the county on some projects. Um, Extension also, um, has publications and other materials and resources. Point six, the routine management and supervision of our county office is by the county coordinator, and that is appointed by Extension. And the way it works is the agent who's been in the county longest is the county coordinator or department head, and right now that's me. And, um, the overall supervision, point seven, is we have a district extension administrator, Sheila Harris, some of you may have met her already. She oversees us, but we are also, um, accountable to the court. Point eight, talks about, uh, the coordinator and what our responsibilities are. It's overseeing the budget, that we handle that money properly, and also any equipment that you provide for us, that we, you know, responsibly use it and take care of it. And then, um, any support staff, like our office administrator, we, um, I oversee her. And then point nine is, uh, we are, the Extension agents are employees of Texas A&amp;M AgriLife Extension, and we follow their policies and procedures, but we also follow those of the county. Point six, our clerical, our office administrator, she is a county employee and goes by county procedures and policies. Uh, eleven, when there is a, a vacancy in our office, A&amp;M AgriLife Extension will find the replacement person and provide the training, but it's left up to the court to, for the final vote and say on that new Extension agent. And then 12, point 12, is our annual budget is certified through a Form CV5, and of course, that can be amended at any time by the court. And then the last page are just things about termination and, um, that this is the whole agreement and kind of more things such as that. And I would like to say, we do appreciate all that you have, you do for our office, and we are very blessed to be able to work here in the county. Any questions?
So you said this is, was a verbal agreement that's been in, in place for some time?
Yes. Extension's been around over 100 years, and we've been in the county. So it's always been verbal, but they just felt like it's time to put it in writing. So everybody knows who we are, what we do.
Yeah, okay. Your motion?
I think they're motion.
Second?
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Benson, second by Mr. Farmby, that we do approve this agreement between A&amp;M, uh, AgriLife Extension Service in Newton County. Uh, any discussion? All papers say aye?
Aye.
Same sound, opposed? Hearing none? Pass. Number seven, discuss and appropriate contract, uh, Keeson X. Cole, uh, engineer with, uh, Arson, no, uh, Wilson and Cole LLC to develop guideline for new subdivision, RV park, and trailer parks in Newton County. This is, uh, something we, we have had in place. It didn't address all our needs. Uh, it mostly addressed our water and our sewer, and touched on some of the roads and, uh, some of the other guidelines. And I think the last, uh, agreement we had was, uh, 2004. So the commissioner decided we would try to upgrade, and, uh, we found that was a bigger challenge to ourselves than, uh, we anticipated. So we decided to, uh, get Mr. Cole up here and, uh, enter into an agreement with him to produce these guidelines. So, uh, is, is any question, or would you like to present anything, Mr. Cole?
My name's Keith. I'm the vice president of hospitals, Nicole. Uh, little history on us. We've been in business since 1988, around about 34 years now. Had to be made changes over the years, but same core group. Uh, our soil business is, it will be bought around, um, drainage roads and utility designs for private developers along with also, uh, cities, uh, counties, water and structures. Uh, so that's basically our involvement for the last 34 years. Uh, been involved with several different, uh, entities helping them establish criteria, uh, whether it's drainage criteria, development criteria, different things in that nature. So we've got some experience in that, in that field, and hopefully we can, uh, put together a, a good package for you guys that helps, help, help you meet your needs. Uh, we've had a little bit of a discussion already. Um, you know, Newton County is a little bit different than, than a lot of the other areas around here, so it's going to be something we're going to have to kind of shake for your county. It's not something we can just allow children and throw together from somebody else's work. But, uh, we're looking forward to it. We appreciate you, all the commissioners, all the residents of Newton County.
Okay.
I make that motion.
Nice, sir. Motion made by Mr. Farmby and second by Mr. Thompson, that we, uh, enter, enter, enter to that agreement with engineering for the subdivisions and, uh, RV parks and trailer parks in Newton County. Any more discussion?
How long you think it's going to take to kind of get something? And I know you got to, I know it's a lot of legwork that needs to be done, but?
Ideally, I would, I would like to get started and, and probably give myself about two, three weeks to get just a basic kind of guideline and outline, and that's basically going to set up all the areas that I think we need to focus on. Uh, get all the different, you know, sections that would be involved in the criteria, uh, get a base kind of, you know, idea started in there, and then follow up with another meeting with the commissioners. And, and from that point, we really start kicking through this idea, you know, trying to make this fit your county. Uh, the, the different sections in there, it's going to be, you know, pretty much the same as you would have anywhere else. It's just a matter of how you structure that section. You know, you're going to want to focus on water, sewer, streams, drainage, lot sizing, uh, plating, all those different areas you see everywhere else. It's just a matter of structure to get to, to fit the needs of your county. Uh, and that's where, you know, a lot of your input will come into place, on how we, how we structure that.
So is this going to fall over in just on someone building a new, just say somebody goes there and buys 30 or 40 acres and decides to put a new house? Is this gonna, how does that affect a normal homeowner?
So the, kind of the typical structure is, that's really kind of a guideline that's been set by the state of Texas, is any subdivision property that is four lots per floor, or require new roadways or, uh, utilities for that sub- that divisional property is what is, uh, makes it a subdivision. If you think less than that, let's say you have a piece of property, you just pull it in, you know, you're building just like one single house, and even if you go and just put it in the few lots, that does not, uh, fall into consideration of subdivision. So it wouldn't affect your single, you know, single residences or anything like that.
If you've got 10 acres, going to build two houses for your children, would that have affected them on the same 10 acres?
That's, and that, that part right there is going to be part of kind of the little work for you, because you can, uh, you know, you could set it up, a lot of counties, as long as it's, uh, family, you know, uh, son, or brother, or whatever, if you're given that property, then, then they don't require you to go into the subdivision regulations. But that'll be part of, of what we'll ask for. Uh, the state doesn't have any type of set regulation on that particular, uh, instance. So that would be something that we, you know, work doing, discuss on how you can handle that type of situation.
Need more discussion? All papers say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sound? Hearing none? Pass. Number eight, discuss and appropriate, uh, accept in a local agreement, uh, cooperation agreement between Galveston County and agreement be for one year, uh, execution and made, uh, terminate in 60 days upon notice of, of sixty days upon notice of all specified within.
My judgment, Mr. President, this is an interlocal agreement between Galveston County and Newton County in regard to housing inmates. This is a common practice amongst curators and counties to accommodate facilities where they can take their overflow. Because, you know, in Newton County we have only limited space, and we use Jasper County and Pope County. Right now Pope County is on taking more people, and it's saying bears up to Park County and Jasper as our overflow. But okay, you're going to have inmates that are hardcore knuckles, that need to be placed somewhere that's consistent with their behavior. Jasper County is one of those facilities that has, I think their capacity is about eleven hundred. We struck up a deal, and we talked amongst ourselves, and they took it for their judgment mission, proposed an interlocal agreement, and right now it's currently ready to repay Jasper forty dollars per inmate for that. And they came up with thirty, forty-four dollars, forty-four dollars and fifty-nine cents per inmate. One of the things spearheaded this, we had a behavioral problem inmate that was housing himself, took up four spots. So, and he's done that for almost a year. He's a behavioral problem that was waiting for bed space. Now, he has since left the draw, got a bed space, and he's not better. And we don't need, right now, we don't need a chicken to open up those spots. But this is a good opportunity for our project to take the need that's in place for a year. It would be a year, like I said, forty-four dollars and fifty-nine cents. Going at a good price, normally it's around anywhere from sixty to eighty per inmate around the state. Also, Galveston County facility, they offer limited sit call, medical care, whereas they have a full staff nurse that is, an inmate gets sick, he gets taken to the sit call. And if we have to transport him, you said, well, you have to take him to the offsite, if you have to, like right now, somebody in Jasper has to go to the doctor, we have to pick him up, take him, bring him back. Well, Galveston charges twenty-four dollars per hour if they take to an offsite, which is, if you look at the cost, if you look at the cost for us to go all the way over there, pick up inmate, take him, move him, if they come all the way back, the cost factor is just passing through the case. This interlocal agreement is being placed for a year, just like if approved, like any other local agreement we have. And at that time, you either extend it, modify, go to the same law, yes. Any questions?
So that's going to be for inmates that have special needs or that wouldn't be normal overflow, you would seek Jasper first? What's the...
Jasper first, and right, like right now, we don't have overflow. Because Pope County used to be a kind of like next option, but they don't, they're not taking any of them. So, and Galveston County, we don't have one anymore. So it's best to try to have a place just today, because like when, down in Pope County, when they had, uh, transfers their prison inmates, their parole, most out there, they had to go all the way up to the end, pretty good haul. In the jail business, I find the state of Texas is very large, but when it comes to inmate movement, it isn't, because they say you need to go here, and you need to be there at this time, and you have to talk with the guy. But this is just good planning for worst-case scenarios. At this point, like I say, we were blessed that Mr. McGodda was in our facility for a year, taking up four spots, using all the overflow.
And we're not responsible for him no more, Sheriff? We're done? Okay.
We waited till when he went out the door.
Also, just so y'all know, most of the time, we are responsible for those guys, regardless of where they are. Doesn't matter. Hospital, anywhere, correct?
Yeah, if we taking them this, like when we have these interlocal agreements, these still are inmates, but that guy, he went through behavior, placed in, uh, in areas of county.
What I'm saying, normally, we would be, we would be responsible for him, normally. It's more of a bench.
Worst-case scenario, Josh, in case we, like I say, again, you know, oh, there's a lot of unique problems that an inmate might have, but a facility has to be able to handle. If the facility is not equipped to handle that, then you must put them somewhere that the facility is consistent with their knucklehead behavior. You have a question? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Hear that motion? I make a motion to accept the interlocal cooperation agreement, Galveston County, back up.
I say.
Motion been made by Mr. Wyatt and second by Mr. Benson, that we accept that agreement between Newton County and Galveston County. Any more discussion? Not all.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Here none, passed. Number nine, discussing appropriate authorized payment for a hundred hours of crew conversation time for Elizabeth Holloway, engineer.
I'm here this morning to ask to be paid this comp time out for Leah's of a hundred hours, and it would be taken out of the floodplain line, which, back in January, Subany River Authority donated the county money to help with the floodplain administration employees that they worked under that. And this is where those funds would come from. And I just need y'all's approval, because she's been working on that, the floodplain, is where the floodplain is coming out of. So I'm just asking for y'all's approval for us to pay that out of there, because the reason I'm coming to ask it, because it's over, a county employee can only get up to two hundred and forty hours of comp time, and she's gone over hers. And she's got documentation of how much she's worked on the floodplain, and we've come up with this figure of the hour, and that's why we're asking to get that paid down.
We had Miss Susan Huggs on that payroll, and I think Mr. Fomby was paying her out of his road and bridge. We was also paying her out of the floodplain, as I understand it. Miss Susan left in September or so, and I authorized Miss Leah's to take over that floodplain job. So that was over and beyond what I required her to do, and so she works on this at odd times, and she's got documented that what she spent this time actually on.
I make that motion.
Okay, motion been made.
All right, she worked.
Sorry.
This is the hundred hours she worked on that.
Yes, sir. With, you know, she's over combining with her hours from her grant stuff, and the floodplain has thrown her over, you know, her, so...
So all of the hundred hours for the floodplain added to the forty? That's great. It's a combination. I'm having a difficult day, dog. I think that because of the floodplain, I have to work over. So it's a combination of two jobs that I've had to work, and I've got every day I don't get my hours. Sometimes I don't put them in this floodplain or grants, I mean, I just have five miles in the road, you know, you don't expect your, and I'll just put them on my feet, you know. It is, I have been having a hard time.
Okay, the motion been made by Mr. Fomby and second by Mr. Thompson, that we paid that hundred hours of crew comp time to Leah's Holloway. Any more discussion? Not all in favor, say aye. Same sign opposed. Here none, passed. Number ten is to approve the request for budget amendment to authorize payment for crew comp time for Leah's Holloway.
This is the next step that I would have to do, is to get the county auditors to make a budget amendment to move that money from one fund line to the other, to that floodplain
I make that motion too.
Say it.
Motion been made by Mr. Fomby and second by Mr. Thompson, that we authorize a budget amendment to authorize the payment for crew comp time for Leah's Holloway. Any more discussion? Not all in favor, say aye. Same sign opposed. Here none, passed. Present status on the active grant currently being administered by Taylor and Snowshoe.
Good, Mr. Sheriff. I think I gave everybody a copy of the handout this morning. Status on most of these projects is basically the same it was last month, we went over it, and I would like to quickly go over it in answering any questions you may have on it. On the hazard mitigation grant program, there again, that's the top items on page one. There is at least one project in each precinct, in precinct three, both of those projects are now completed. The final draw approval was approved by T D M on the fourteenth of last month. Precinct one and precinct two, T D M has approved the phase two on both of those projects. And basically what you're looking at, phase, phase one is the design work, phase two is the actual going out for bid on those projects. Both of those have been submitted to Commissioners' Court by Goodwin Laster. Commissioners' Court has authorized going out for bid on both of those projects, and the engineering firm will be doing that within the next couple of weeks on that. Project for precinct four is also a road project. Design work has been completed on that, and it's currently still with T D M, awaiting their approval of the design work. The 2020 C D B G grant, once again, that's through Texas Department of Agriculture. All those projects are currently complete, and then we'll be going to close that phase of the project here within the next few weeks as well. G L O housing project, once again, that is still underway. As of this week, we will be doing the final inspection on our twenty-nine house that was reconstructed. We have one remodel that's been done, and we've got two of those that are currently underway, and then we have our buyout projects that are still in play as well on that particular Going to page two, the G L O infrastructure contract, there again, this particular contract, we are in the process of moving funds from the housing grant over into infrastructure to do a phase two on this project. All of the phase one projects have been completed at this time. The phase two, once again, is pending the G L O amendment. In meetings with the general, I'm sorry, we use a lot of acronyms. In meeting with the general land office last week, they did say that they anticipate this amendment moving forward within the next couple of weeks. We're hopefully, hoping to get on down the road with that one. On page three, the Harvey infrastructure project, there again, three of the four precincts, the projects have been completed. In precinct two, we are pending those utility relocations, and I think based on what the engineer has told us, they're hoping to get out there. Pat, if I'm not mistaken, they hope to get out there within the next couple of weeks and get started on that, as it relates to the home lines.
Yes, sir, that's true.
And so we're hoping that'll be taken care of in the near future, and then we can get back on construction on that project. The next thing is the Harvey buyout grant. We are processing those applications as well. If I'm not mistaken, we currently have fifty-seven applications for the buyout grant, and we're here in various stages of processing. Twenty-one, twenty-two C D B G application, there again, that's through Texas Department of Agriculture. We are still pending the round two notification on that. At this point in time, we do still anticipate that project being in round two, but we're still several months off of making that announcement at this point in time. And then we've got the Harvey bid grant. All of that work is currently under design work and environmental process being completed on those projects.
When you think we're going to start that? When you think we're going to start that, Mark? On the mid, on the Harvey mid? When you think we're going to start that?
Environmental on that, we're hoping we will be able to send that off for authorization to utilize the grant funds, is what it's referred to on the environmental side. We're hoping to get that off within the next thirty days. As far as engineering, Mr. Otis can probably answer the status of that better than I can.
Are you referring to the mid?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, yeah, we ticked, we completed the field surveys, we've completed the preliminary engineering report, and we've started with design.
Y'all got anything else you want to ask?
We have guesstimation, we have one of the, uh, two or four times, we'll be back and couldn't really know it. Do you have any guesstimation on the store time, actual construction time?
About when we'll get the mid plans complete?
Do you have an estimate of when the design work will be completed, Pat?
Go start.
I mean, right now, it looks like we'll have plans ready to bid in about ten and
First of July, hopefully?
Any other question? Thank you, Mr. Mark. Number twelve, proclaim April twenty twenty-two as fair housing month in Newton County, and do hereby urge all the citizens of this... And do hereby urge all the citizens of this locality to be become aware of and support the fair housing law. Martin?
This is something that the county does typically do on an annual basis. Two of the grant programs that the county seeks quite often, once again, through Department of Agriculture as well as through the Texas General Land Office. Both of those do require participation in supporting fair housing on the part of the county. You are required to perform activities throughout the year to scale that support. This is one of those activities that addresses that.
I hear a motion for that.
I make that motion.
Motion been made by Mr. Benson and second by Mr. White that we proclaim April 2022 as fair housing month here in Newton County. Is any discussion? Not all in favor, say aye? All same sign? Here none passed. Page number 13, discussing appropriate approval extending the one-year existing contract with the disaster debris monitoring and consulting service with Whitel Brown LLC. Ms. Holloway?
Yes, sir. This is, you know, we procured Whitel Brown's last year. And we're able to renew our contract two more times. So this will be our first renewal. And this is the company that does the monitoring that's required of debris removal when we have a disaster. And right now we're utilizing them under HMGP 4266. Some of the houses FEMA put under, but they had to be monitored. So we're utilizing them now also. And so far, they've been really good to work with. They're taking care of their paperwork like they're supposed to. And so we are requesting to renew the contract for one year.
Okay, we have that original contract. How long does a regional contract live? One year? And we just?
One year with two renewals. So in other words, we can have them for three, for three years.
Yep. Okay. Any more discussion? I hear a motion.
I make a motion.
One second.
Motion been made by Mr. Fombi and second by Mr. Thompson that we extend this year existing contract with the debris disaster debris monitoring and consulting service with Whitel Brown LLC. Any discussion? Not all in favor, say aye? Same sign, opposed? Here none passed. Number 14, discussing appropriate approval extended to one year the existing contract for disaster removal with DRC Emergency Service LLC. Ms. Leah?
Yes, this one is for the actual debris removal and other disaster services. And this will be our last renewal with them. And so next year we will have to procure again. Yes, this is our last one. These things get confusing. And they, just like the other one, they're just asking for a renewal without any guarantees.
In our agreement, was that an option that they put in there that we could extend that?
The state requires us to, used to we could renew for like, I don't know, like five years or something. Now they only wanted to have a contract for three years without going out for procurement again. But we have to, the year we procure them, and then we can renew them twice.
That's unfavorable damage. If we do a one-year contract, you can review that contract twice.
Yeah.
For those three years, that's possibly the only contract that's going to break.
Hear a motion?
So, ma'am?
Motion been made by Mr. Thompson and second by Mr. White that we extend that one-year contract with DRC Emergency Service LLC. Any discussion? Not all in favor, say aye? Same sign, opposed? Here none passed. Number 15, discussing appropriate approval section of precinct four for road repair. ITB number 2022 GL GO four. Please.
This is under, this is for precinct four. And this is one of his Harvey projects under the public assistance. In fact, this is one of his, get down to the end, I believe.
Get it.
And we had bid this out before and the bids came in really, really high. So we went back and with Rhonda and Mr. Gene and Jana and myself, and we really looked at the way FEMA had wrote it up. And so we reduced the scope to where Mr. Gene and his crew are going to do all the prep work on the, on the roads. And then this was to bid to come in and put the asphalt out. Is that right, Gene?
That's right.
Okay. They start running together.
Yeah.
And so we received a bid from Texas Materials, which itself posed $114,850. And from Honeywood's. Was it 120?
129, 132, 50.
29, yes. And so we recommend that we, we recommend Gulf Coast, Texas Materials, that they'll bid. And Mr. Gene's looked over it and it's, it's within the allocation and what he asked, what we asked him to do.
We'll be able to deal with forced labor in this contract.
And that's reimbursed at, it's 910.
To Mr. Gene, Martin?
Yes. This is one of his last Harvey projects under the public assistance.
I make a motion.
Aye, aye.
Motion been made by Mr. Fombi and second by Mr. Benson that we approve the bid to Gulf Coast for $114,850 for the ITB 2022 GO four. Any discussion? Not all in favor, say aye? Same sign, opposed? Here none passed. Number 16 is discussing appropriate point FHAST, work group member. Ms. Leah?
Okay, this is another requirement of our community development block grant programs in their disaster recovery. And some of the grants we have under Hood and GLO require us to do this. And we have, have to appoint a work group. And the, we call it FAST. And it stands for Fair Housing Activity Statement. And there is a real long form that we have to go through and get updated because the demographics have changed over time. And so we are requesting to appoint this group. And they tell us we have to have two from either the chief elected official or designees. And we're asking Commissioner White and Commissioner Fombi to be under that group. Group two, under school district leadership, which Michelle Barrow, who is with Newton ISD. Affordable housing providers, Ms. Tammy Henslering with the Newton County, Newton Housing Authority, are her designee. She's trying to make sure her schedule's good. Veterans and disability advocates, Mr. Ray Bootner, he's our veterans representative. And improvement, county-based improvement and minority leaders is Ms. Deborah White. And I tried to reach out to Ms. Lewis and I have, I didn't hear back from her. So if she calls back, Ms. Elena Lewis, I'm gonna put her, ask for an alternate later on, you know, an additional person later on. But right now this is our group so we can get started. And if approved, our next step, I'll be, I'll be sending out emails with the schedule and a copy of our current form with identification areas of where we need to update it.
Hear a motion?
Make a motion except the point, ask work group membership.
Second?
Motion been made by Mr. White and second by Mr. Fombi, we approve the group members to the FHAST group. Any more discussion? Not all in favor, say aye? Same sign, opposed? Here none passed. Number 17, discussing appropriate approval, the consolidation of poll location for May the seventh, 2022 constitutional amendment election. Mr. Dower?
Morning.
I'm requesting for the May 7 constitutional amendment election. We have two amendments. I am requesting that we consolidate our poll, the seven polls for that election. I went back through both history and there's something about constitutional amendment election to justify the cost of having all the polls open. I'm requesting for the seven that we consolidate.
How many vote, how many voted?
The last constitutional election, it was probably maybe 2,000. Just strictly constitutional. And I'm suggesting the civic center, the K building, leave in community because there is others more, Faywell, it's kind of in between. Bleakwood, we do Old Laurel, it's, it's kind of in between. And then of course, Goodville. I can do your call if anybody would like to.
Jamestown come to Newton?
Sorry.
Jamestown come, have to come to Newton?
Yes, sir. Just for the constitutional.
Yeah.
Of course, the early voting dates on those are April 25th through May 3rd. And then we turn right back around and start early voting for 24.
Them couldn't be combined? No?
So it wouldn't. Because believe me, our question was the same. It did not make any sense.
Yeah.
But the state wouldn't allow it.
Well, we wouldn't want to do anything that makes sense.
Special one.
Hear a motion?
I make that motion.
Hear a second?
Think it's a wise idea?
On the constitutional amendment, yes, I do. This, any election you do is such.
How many did we have vote during the normal election?
During the normal election? This last time we had some, we're bouncing somewhere. So.
Less than half.
Way less on the constitutional. And like I said, it's two constitutional amendments. So I do not believe just going back through voting history of just a constitutional election with nothing else on it. I just don't feel like it, the cost, that it would cost the county just a problem. We normally consolidate the polls for an election in such as case.
Okay.
Forgive me for interrupting. David Kelly, I'm the precinct chair, New Haven, precinct 11. Ms. KK, what's the dollar advantage of not doing it? And I, I say this not to pass up your process, but voting is the fundamental right of every citizen. And an amendment to the Texas Constitution, very important. And people need to be able to get to the vote without having to have a extra, extra ballots to do that. So if we're talking $10,000.
Because you have to have three election workers at every poll. They're paid $13,000. The maximum you can pay is $14,000. And then a lot of these polls we have to pay what we consider a donation or rent. And then you have all of the expense of having individual ballots. And it's, it's actually the programming and the actual printing of the ballots for each one of the polls. As for this, we can consolidate, you only have seven different ballots and seven, seven different programming. But you're talking about $14,000, $15,000 that can be tied up. So that's why we do not have a voter turnout to justify the cost of this.
I just didn't want rights being given over to two.
Right. And I understand, and I, I agree with you. We need to do whatever we need to do to get voters out. But that's the sad thing about this is they're not going to get out and vote. They're just not.
So we don't know the actual cost of, of reducing the number of polling places and the workers and the extra time. So we don't know the extra cost.
It's significant.
How many polls do you normally have out?
We normally have like four. The runoff, I'm suggesting all 15.
So we have 15. You're gonna cut it to half? So you're talking about seven locations? So you're talking about cutting your bill in half? And what's the bill normally?
It's normally the programming and stuff alone can be up to $15,000.
Okay. So you're talking about cutting $7,000, $7,500 off of it?
Yes, because we're gonna turn right back around and on the 24th, do it all over again. And I'm not suggesting on local races and the state and federal, cutting the polling locations. Of course, that's a second agenda item, but I agree with him. I, I think people are gonna get out and vote on the 24th. They're not gonna vote on the seventh. And it's just, elections are such a big cost. So I'm trying on the seventh to save us what we can. But I mean, I'll do whatever we want. It's just gonna be, May is gonna be a large expense for election because we have seven.
So in our, in our budget, election budget, do we have that money in there?
I have to move some around, I'm sure.
You got plenty?
No, we'll probably have to.
But we still have the May the 24th. And we would have the general election. There's no other election in between.
No, sir.
Runoff and the general.
The 24th, we'll have the seventh, the 24th, the May. And then we'll have the November general. And that's all the elections we will have issue. Which is enough.
So do you know the actual cost in the whole 15 polling places?
I don't have a total, no, sir. I mean, I didn't write that down. But I know that elections are, it's a significant cost.
You know what issue? So we're already out of our budget? How do we get there? How do we get out of budget?
Okay, maybe. I know this is a sensitive issue with the budget. I'd like the commissioners' court to realize this is the one chance citizens get to actually have a say in what's going on. It's important, whether it's one amendment, twenty amendments, whether it's local races, this is our way to show how we support the governments of where we live.
Thank you. We're already on the fence on, we're already on the fence, ain't we, sir? I'm lying. I'm gonna say we're open.
Of all of them?
I agree, I agree with him. I mean, I mean, we already take enough slack over not having enough voting boxes as it is.
Yeah, we didn't have one at Gis that we should have had.
Got any money?
Yeah.
I, I agree with you. When you start diminishing the people's right to vote and the distance in which you have to travel, then you put them in a compromised position to where they may not vote on account of $4 of gas, $4 of gallon of gas. So I, I don't think we should, should reduce the polling places in which people are accustomed to go vote. And if we start reducing, and sooner or later, we'll have one voting box in Newton County. Is that what you're trying to tell me?
Yes. So we're gonna try to open them one up in Gis too?
We can't, I don't have a place to put it. We cannot, the law's stated, I've been reading that one. We cannot use like a portable building or anything like that. So as of right now, I can't do anything about it, yes.
So they can't use the fee store?
Last time I went into the fee store, it was, it's not safe.
And the fee store's safe, there, there's no problem with the, the area where the people can vote now.
That's true.
Yeah, the bathroom facility.
Needs a little improvement.
It's not, I'm.
Needs a little improvement.
Yeah, it, it needs some help, but ours, the store itself, is solid and, and we're welcome to use it.
You say portable building. What size building do they set it up for? Then we put a building up.
It has to be a permanent structure.
We're going to want a big van, call it.
And set it up and make it permanent, not movable. We can use it, but you can't just, you know, put a building out there temporarily or whatever because that, that was something we had kept going on too. About doing something temporary, it's not allowed.
So you're saying we have to pay rent to some of these locations also? Okay, so if we take our rent money and we go down to Gis and we talk to the gentleman that owns the fee store, and we take that rent money and we do a little bit of reconstruction to the bathroom, to make the bathroom where it's, that we think that it is nice enough for a lady to go in and use, then we're good with that, right? We can do that, right? Because we're paying rent anyway.
Well, we give them a certain amount as a donation. So whatever he decides, you know, they decide they want to do with that.
Okay.
I mean, we don't have anything to do with that.
No, but we can suggest that.
We just give it to them and do whatever, it's for using the facility. It's like making rounds.
I'm for doing that. Can we do that?
We're, we're past, we, we've got to send this. It has to be, I have to have this done today.
We can pay rent. We can pay rent.
He paid $100.
A hundred dollars.
Put the money in. Yes. One nothing. We got a piece of that. But we can't just go into a private business and we do it back.
I didn't say that.
That's what.
I said that maybe we could take the rent money that he's gonna get and he could repair the restroom. I didn't say us.
I know, but the fact that you can't tell me what to do.
I understand that. But they're wanting that voting box over there.
There's no other place that you can get it at all?
No, it was there for years. But we're totally.
Are we still, are we still gonna put a building over there? We talked about?
Y'all been going to talk to Mud, I didn't talk to him.
Mud says.
There it is right there.
Property, property's available at Mud's.
Yes, so Judge Commissioner Jeffrey Walton with Mari Street Utility District, they're all in champion at our well side. We have plenty of space and we've offered that to the court. We spoke to Commissioner Thompson about that. Y'all are all aboard. They have offered another pool, run of water and sewer at no cost. You put the building, do the parking. We talked about doing a small little lease agreement, basically just the formality of that. But basically, the only stipulation besides that is that we would have access to the building. We would make sure everything's loaded around it, logged, protected, and all that kinds of stuff. But we would provide the water and sewer for it. It's, it's there, right there, at your discretion whenever the court decides to do that.
So Ms. KK, you said we were out of time. You, you mean today is the last day or is it, is not the end of the week that we could get this done?
I need to have this done so Melissa and I can move forward with this. We're already, I'm already fixing to mail out ballots.
Could we have that ready for the 24th, May, May election? But not this one, since she's out of time on this one? I think that the issue on the ballot, on the agenda was whether or not we were gonna go down to seven boxes or not. And we decided not to, that.
How many people's over in Gis?
Probably 300 registered voters or 200 registered voters.
That's always worse.
We are out of money, right?
So, how long does it take to close? Wouldn't that be a separate agenda?
Yeah.
If it gets back there, so we can discuss it back there.
Judge.
Yes, sir. Yeah. Oh. Was you gonna speak first?
I was gonna ask, the agenda is to open 14th, 7th, right? That's what's on the line. How much money are we gonna save?
Save $5,000.
I understand the rights, about what he's saying about people looking for the rights. But do we have the money to open off 14th?
It doesn't matter if you have the right, it doesn't matter if you have the money or not, it's the right for the people's vote.
Agreed.
Has nothing to do with money.
That's it. We can't neglect the rights. We can figure out money.
Mr. Powell, do you, do you have something?
Yeah, I'd just like to say, I agree with Commissioner Fomby. Open all the boxes, your budget's busted, find the money, show the people you're gonna let them vote. It's the right thing for the court. It's transparent, you got demographics, you know, we're gonna, we're gonna take Jamestown out of the vote. Let's open all the boxes.
Okay, the, the motion had been made by Mr. Benson, but it, that was a second. So do we want to open it back up for another motion?
I make the motion that we, uh, cut the polling down to seven boxes. We open all the current polls so that people will have the opportunity to vote in this, uh, May 7th election.
Second?
Motion made by Mr. Wyatt and second, Mr. Fomby, that we not approve the consolidation of the polls located for February the, uh, May the 7th, 2020 constitutional amendment election. So this is not approving that consolidation. Any discussion? Not all in favor, say aye. Poll same sign? Hear none, pass. Number eighteen, discussing appropriate approve the polling locations for branch earlier voting for May the 24th, 2022, Republican, Democrat, uh, primary election. Mr. Dwork?
I propose on all fifteen to be open for that election. Also have early voting scheduled because like I said, it's, it's back to back. We will be done, not even finished with the seventh, and we start the 24th. And then the first day of early voting for that's gonna be May the 16th. And the last day's gonna be May the 20th. And that will also be available to Newville.
Make that motion.
That's fair.
Motion made by Mr. Fomby and second, Mr. Thompson, we approve the polling locations for branch early voting for May the 24th, 2022 for the public, Republican and the Democrat, uh, primary elections. Any discussion? Not all in favor, all in favor, say aye. Same sign opposed? Hear none, pass. Number nineteen, discussing appropriate renew the lease agreement for the copying machine located in Newton County's clerk's office. Mr. Dwork?
The lease is up on our, our copying machine. I have spoke with them about it. And he's telling me that I needed to get with the auditor's office to make sure that that was allotted for the lease in my budget. And as soon as that was approved, he would give the lease to her. I don't believe that's been done, as I said. So I don't think we can act on this because we do not have the lease yet. Kind of told me that she would get it right quick, but we still haven't received it, so.
So there's no action on number nineteen?
No, we probably just need to table it and whenever we get the, uh, the lease on it, then we can bring it back up.
Do you want no action or do you want to table?
Table it because it will need to be brought back up.
Okay. I hear a motion to table.
I make the motion to table, renewing the lease agreement.
Your second?
Second?
Motion made by Mr. Wyatt, second, Mr. Fomby, we table item number nineteen. All in favor, say aye. Poll same sign? Hear none, pass. Number twenty, discussing appropriate approve Newton County Local Match of $15,028 to the Burt, former of the Burt Center. This match includes both the regular match and the match for the Mental Health Emergency Center. This is something that's been, uh, all Leaven County does in, in Texas. And this is the same payment we've been doing the last three years. So I was just asking for y'all's approval.
Paula, you wanna say something about that? The Burt Center? Has anybody been saying anything about the Burt Center? Sheriff's left and Judge, Judge Greer left. It don't matter, we don't get the service out of the Burt Center. You would think that if we paid $15,000 a year, that is, that we would be able to get somewhat some service out of the Burt Center. We do not. It's a first come, first served. It's very likely for you never to even get anybody in that Burt Center because they don't have enough debt or health care there for our people of Newton County. We've been paying this for years and years and years and not been receiving a dime's worth of service from them. That's what the deal is on the Burt Center. Judge Price was here, he knows all about it. We, we've all been through this, the sheriff complained, Billy Rose complained about it. I think Sheriff Furbish complained about it. It is money that we're not getting, in my opinion, and we just paying it out because everybody else pays it out. And we're not getting the service for this county. That's what I know about the Burt Center. We've sat in several meetings over there at Jasper and everybody has the same problem, but everybody keeps funding. So my answer to that is no.
I do, I do know they do provide some service to the mental health because they have to evaluate, uh, some of the mental health that has to come back to Newton County. And they have to be examined by them to make sure they get their medicine and some care. Now, what it's $15,000 worth, uh, that's up for questioning. I do know there is a lot of complaints as I've said in meetings. Like Mr. Fomby has said, in Jasper, we sit in those meetings and that's all you ever hear is complaints, complaints. But who, who are we gonna reach out to for this service? My question.
I just don't think it's right for them to take our money and not give us somewhat, some kind of open door, or some kind of, Newton County has two beds. Or one bed. I would be happy with one bed because $15,000 don't go very far in that business, in, in that line of work. And I agree. But we do not, in my opinion, get the service or a bed when we call over there and need it. And I guess the tele, I guess you're talking about the tele, the teleconference.
Well, there's some, and I wish the sheriff was here, if somebody could reach down there and get him. Somebody call him.
I'll call him. I'll call him. And, and, Ms. White?
I was gonna say, I believe there is a string of things on you. You just have, definitely, because you're, you're. A lot of times when they're evaluating, they'll do a, on the string. And I'm not present for that, that's the direct, that's the direct.
Hey, can you come back up here? You still here?
Well, I, I just, I want to make sure we get in this discussion. Everybody needs to be in the discussion before we make a decision not to do it. I think we should have some input from the sheriff because he uses that, that service more than anybody else. And maybe, uh, some of the justice piece, uh, I think y'all do. I do, I do know, uh, some of the stuff, some of the mental health that go, comes through my office, has to be signed off of them.
We definitely, we're not gonna be needing to be there for someone else.
So, so, so are you telling me that you have good luck with them?
I, I'm just gonna, when I leave. But that's, that's what they're making. These are, for deputy, for Newville, to, to Thomas, so we can, and it's all clear.
That's the reason I would like for the sheriff up here, I agree, to, to get in this conversation. Because they do use it. They have to.
Well, then you're telling me the service has got better?
I think it's, it is our discussion in Jasper, it, it has got somewhat better. And sheriff, come on in and, uh, we're, we're talking about the Burt Center. And of course, Newton County always contributes to that organization. So it's, the, the topic is, or subject is, that do they meet our needs from Newton County through the mental health or any other service that they provide?
Well, they, I would say yes and no. Could they do more? Yes, uh, because a lot of the situations that we have, you know, when the inmates answer certain questions. questions, are you dangerous to yourself? No. Are you going to hurt yourself? No. You want to hurt somebody else? No. No high level cares. So then we're stuck with, you know, like I said, there are some things we need to do, work on, and I'm in a fact finding position for that. You know, it's a very unique situation, not just for them, for all of them.
So when that, when that person does answer, yes, I might hurt somebody, then what happens?
They go, they get, they get a bed, they get placed there.
Where? Does the Burke Center do that for you?
Depends, huh?
Does the Burke Center do that for you?
Yeah.
They do place all of your inmates?
The ones that need to be placed? Yeah.
But is it a third party or is it them?
Well, it's two them. Now, we don't, just like this, we have one taking the Harris County that I told you about at Rust for a year, almost a year. He went to Harris County. Now the brand new facility.
Well, that's just my, that's just my example. It took a year for the Burke Center to actually find him a home.
Now, well, there's so many people on the way and less.
And that's where the state has failed in providing those hospitals or facilities for the mental health. And it's left up to the state to provide that. They have done some additional work, even at Rust and somewhere down in lower Texas, that has increased the bed size, but it hasn't increased as much as the mental health has.
Yeah, there's a lot of different studies and a lot of different initiatives going on around the state. But in the meantime, we have a mental health problem. We, the boots on the ground, you know, we have to deal with these folks. And we're not, we're not psychologists and everything. You know, we do very best we can with the training that we have provided to us. But, you know, this has been talked about for the last five, six years, not long, you know, by the state. We need to get toughed up, you know? We're dying on the vine. You know, our hands are tied, handcuffed, you know? And at the end of the day, those people are what we got, who are not here. And that really pains me more than anything else. Because, you know, we see it, but there ain't a whole lot we can do. And I know what we need to do is put a fire on these folks. And I know there's a lot of different initiatives out there, a lot of different groups, group groups, that's working it, but they ain't working it fast enough.
Do you know of any, is there any recommendation for us to leave the Burke Center at this time? What, we were in the process of renewing the contract and we were wondering if now's a good time to seek other resources or, I mean, do you know of any?
You're asking me, should we leave them, not support? I was saying, no, we should not. Because a little bit of suffering is better than nothing at all. Because we do not have them, what do we have? You know, again, I couldn't just stand by you and say this is better than that. But I can tell you this, though, I'm pushing on there too. And not only me, my colleagues are, and they know. You know, but like I said, they just them. It's from the state's wonderful government, they're not.
So you're having better luck with them?
Yeah, that's, I am.
Okay.
I am. Again, they came to, the guy was eighty-four on the list. He was a hundred and six when he got on the list, I think. And last I heard, he was like eighty-four, and the next I heard, they said, bring him on. And so that's why we didn't have to. We should have get this done with the MOU, the staff, to send him to God's, move clear up to my jail station. So from my position, we're pushing and we're all trying to work it together. But again, for all of you, y'all need help to do, because that's not my fault, my fault, family's fault is all I fault. Justice?
Is Newton giving their dollars worth, fifteen thousand they're adding in every year? Is the value actually there or is it less? Is it, are we giving more? Fifteen thousand dollars, a lot of money to give somebody if they're only doing so much. If we give three thousand, which is absurd. So are we getting value for our dollar?
So we give them fifteen thousand of that. And that's an annual cost that we give them. Well, it's just the need to make sure that we get our money for everybody. Again, like I told you, we are, this is state, 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 everything, a lot of the things that, the problem is just so large and it's mostly, it's not the services, it's the place, it's the facilities. That's the problem. The space. The waiting area. Waiting area. You got to be pretty bad to move down there, to move up, the waiting area and everything. What if I, first of all, I got, you know, you're dealing with Rust for years. And on top of that, look at the families, what they have to do. Because dealing with an adult with special needs, I mean, it takes a toll, takes a toll on the surrounding community as well. So I think that, as you asked me, my opinion, my personal opinion, this is better than not having anything. I'm going to tell you what, I'm going to give fifteen thousand dollars for hours and more if I can. I'm aware of that.
So if we didn't support the Burke Center, what would be your next idea?
It has to be dealing with what the problem of the person that we try to get placed. There's problems, right right now. I have a situation I'm working outside the person, the big person, the big regimen, high level care. I reached out to private industry and over a couple of weeks, I was able to find a facility of care, even reached across the state of Louisiana. And I hear this report that that person has an appointment for their team for a facility. But again, it has to do with a lot of different things, options, of course, insurance coverage and things like that. This is expensive endeavor. So working with the families, that them got them, there's a lot, a lot of, I don't have the understanding that you need to do this. I can only provide you, find some information, facts, but here, this is something that I just look at, try to put people together.
This is, this is not only for beds, this is also for medicine also. To provide prescriptions to medicate this person, to get them back on the right track. Because some of them, that's all they need. They may not need a bed. But they also provide the prescription meds that they need to their doctor.
Yeah. We had an incident where one of the guys got his medication through the Burke Center and got him straight. Took it, you know, took, because of the medication, he was able to get back right, sort of even. And today, he's not been back. We held on to him for a little bit, got his medication, because his biggest thing is medication wasn't working for his issues. And he was able to get that under control and that came to take him to treatment. So there's a lot of different caveats to that program. But it's a lot better to have, have it and move forward and identifying how can we get better, how can we get better?
So if the medicine doesn't do the justice, do they have, do they provide therapy? And they're responsible for anything else other than just medication or how they work?
Yeah, well, once they get in a facility, you know, that, according to what the needs are, but once we take it to the facility, you know, we're done.
Sheriff, you got anything you want to add to that?
Well, yeah, I think so. Just, oh, your patient, I went to a health conference this past year and they gave us a little information, I'll just pass that on to you. In, I think it was nineteen seventy-five, the state of Texas had a hundred and sixty-seven thousand mental health beds available or something, right? In two thousand fifty, and keep in mind, at that time, Texas had a population of twelve billion, all right? In two thousand fifteen, Texas had seventeen hundred mental health beds available and a population of twenty-five billion. Because at some point between seventy-five and fifteen, the federal government decided people didn't need to be in, to be alive anymore. And that's what caused all this. I don't think anybody anywhere is happy with their mental health availability, no word of a statement, but no agency, no sheriff's office, another word would be happy with what you got. But like I believe the sheriff said and the judge said, if we don't stay with the Burke Center, where do we go? I don't know. And I, and my suggestion would be to, let's go on and pay the fifteen thousand at this time and let's think about it and work on it the next time. Maybe there is, there's a, there's a operation that we sometimes have, there in Louisiana, they're called oceans, and we deal with them time to time and they do the same thing. Or they're in a different world over there, but, but there are, there's, but there ought to be other options. But at the destination point, I don't know what they are and I don't think anybody else is here to be. So that's just where we are. It's the thing in the world, but it's what we got and it's all we got.
I agree, yes. The thing is, oceans have been very helpful. I talked to them, really they got their speed down and they get private and just cross state lines a lot of, again, we need to, like the judge said, that's what we do, go for the doctors better than us. If we don't have this, we have others. And look at, look at some options. Because I, like I said, I got a running path, what I'm doing, it takes a lot of time, takes a lot of kids trying to, you know, they're working them on those things. And like I said, I've seen the families, you know, I've had families call me, that's what's it, and everything, try to stay and find some kind of problems, but there ain't a whole lot. This is, this is a statewide problem. It's been like this for a while, nobody, anybody has any force to reach to the legislature, legislator. This makes it awful, this is why. And one of the things should be found, our profession, we don't know just how much the problem with drugs makes this problem worse. Because a lot of it is, doesn't help you, drug, drug, mental health, which one's going to work?
Being a candidate or if it's not going to work, you know, in jail, I shouldn't start playing for my own career.
Well, I know the justices, they have to deal with the mental health boards all the time and so they have to be evaluated and then y'all have to take them or someone has to take them, sometimes it's an individual. So.
When I keep a book on my head, I'm doing my name, that's for sure. Because I want this process to be as simplified as possible, you know, for that individual or family, all.
I do, I do some. A lot of times it falls back on Mike, but, but I have done some, yeah.
As long as you, so you've convinced me that we're doing better? Because a couple of years ago, we weren't doing any better.
Oh, we don't.
Okay.
We don't. Like I said, getting that not for there, I was jail, getting it for a year.
No, I'm just, I just, I was burnt out on the Burke Center. I was burnt out on the Burke Center. Keep, continue, just redoing the contract, keep renewing it, everything's happy and we're not getting any service out of it. I mean, I've been to three or four of those meetings and there wasn't a happy one in them, there wasn't a happy elected official there, nor anybody that had anything to do with the mental health system was happy with the Burke Center.
And I agree with the doctor.
So if you're telling me that we're better, it makes me feel better.
I certainly don't want to defend them, but, but I think they're doing the best they can do for us with what we've all got to work with. I mean, they cover a lot of territory and there are more and more people with mental health issues out there. Basically what's happening is, it's the same post, see, again and again, and they're, they're, the Burke Center will, the Burke Center sometimes works, it'll make, they, we call them, they file somewhere else to help. It will be at the Burke Center or the effort, they'll send them to Kingwood or the Pentagon or wherever, basically, or even, either, the state only has two mental health offices early in the rush, that's it. That's for twenty-five million people. And so it's going, it's being a thought when overhead it, always going to be a problem. But I can tell you, there may be much better services out there than, I don't know where they are and I don't know anybody else to, to, totally, like the officials I talked to, people doing this, they've all got the same problem.
All I'm saying is normally when you do a contract somewhere, there's some fine little bitty words in there saying that we're going to do this for you. All that we're saying is we're going to pay them fifteen thousand dollars. All that we're saying is we're going to pay them $15,000. And they may provide you some service and they may not provide you some service. All I'm saying, if we're getting $15,000 worth of service out of them, you've changed my mind. Okay?
I think we, I think we give it what we pay them. I do, they are not, that ain't what we get, but we give it what we get.
So you're saying it could be better also?
Always, yeah, sure, it could always be better, but it's.
So how many do you think that y'all sent over there to the Burke Center that they actually helped you?
Well, every person who comes into jail on mental health or we call them, is spoken to by the Burke Center, they do it on, on their own computer. They talk to a psychologist. And then that psychologist who worked for the Burke Center or whatever, the department director, I don't know. They then decide whether or not, by superiority as a person, whether or not they need more care or if they just need to make it, what was for them to go to the Burke Center to get new medication or whatever. And everybody that we or that I need to be seen by the Burke Center, it is made better.
Well, it's gotten better then.
Yeah.
And they just opened a new facility in Harris County to job down my education for mental health. And that's what we took our guy. So hopefully that's going to lead to some of that, that long-term advantage, previous.
Okay, Tom, then. They change the mind?
Yeah, it's, it's something that we only don't have in Newton County, but Everett County that I'm associated with has the same problem and got the same crap. And so we're not staying along over here about our service. And we've complained in these meetings and I know y'all have, at the same time complaining about the service we get. And I think through our complaining, they have gotten better to some extent. But when they don't have the beds, even at Lufkin, then they have to go outside services or state. And if they don't have the beds, why are you doing it? I mean, they can suggest a bed, but if they don't have the beds, they don't have beds. And you, and this fellow you've been talking about, start out on 160, is it on the list? Is that what you said?
I want to say like 100.
Okay.
Last April, we, we, well, actually we brought it back to us in April of last year, but it's been on a first prior to that. We just got rid of him two weeks ago.
Well, just to say what Mike said, I mean, we're north of 30 million people now. You was talking about 1,700 beds, that don't even, that don't even, the math don't even come, anybody that can figure math, that don't even come close. I mean, that's ridiculous.
Yeah, we put the back tail of the gun shot on that.
Yeah, I mean, we probably got 35 million people now. Yeah. All right, y'all convinced me that it was last.
Carry your motion.
I'll make it motion.
I'll second.
Motion good and leave Mr. Palmer and second Mr. White, we approve the Newton County local match of $15,028 for the Burke Center. Any discussion? Not all in favor, say that? Same sign of opposed? Here none? Pass. Okay, number 21 is discussion appropriate, determine possible solutions or irregularities to the handling of scrap iron sales in the commissar precincts. And we're going to start out and turn it over to Mr. Powell, he wanted to speak on this item. And so you have five minutes.
Well, I appreciate you putting this on the agenda, Justice Lee. This is a, this is a sensitive topic, precinct board for sure, and I think throughout the county. You know, I think today the court is going to consider adopting a procedure or a process to manage this and get alignment between all the precincts and maybe a little bit more that famous word transparency amongst the residents in Newton County. But I, I do want to, to say that, you know, and doing just a little bit of research on this, there's, in the Texas government code, there's, there's a section 263155 that talks about records. And it's very clear, anything you sell in salvage or surplus has to be line item, what it was, how much it sold for, and that record has to be kept for a year. The next clause, 263156, has to do with funds. And it's, it states clearly that those funds has to be transferred to the general fund with two exceptions. One exception is if you salvage a surplus item such as gambling stuff that you confiscate, say the sheriff, that has to go into the law enforcement fund. The other is, say you take blades off of a front end, a front end loader or a maintainer and you scrap those, well, that has to go back into the road. These funds, it's clearly defined in those two, two segments, two small paragraphs. It's not a lot of room to move about that, create a policy outside of that. And what, what the county and the residents are hearing, if this money is going into funds and the commissioners' offices and then they're being used for different things such as bills, as far as gifts, other things, that's what the residents are hearing. Whether that is true or not, I don't have the data in front of me to state that. But I would say that as you create these policies today, if you clearly stay within those two guidelines in the Texas government code, which quite honestly is all the policy need, you'll be in compliance with that code. And I think, you know, when it goes back into those, when those funds go back into that general fund and then the court reaches into the general fund, there's a tracking mechanism for that. And then you know exactly where the money went. And you just have to remember what's being said out there. Well, you know, once those, that scrap metal is put in a dumpster, a waste site, and county workers are used to go get that, transport it, what have you, it becomes county property. It's not, well, we got that from John over on such and such road. No, when they put it in that county dumpster and it's, county, county employees pick it up, county payroll, transport it, county equipment, it's county funds. So I would just say, before you create a policy, look at those two, two paragraphs, they'll tell you exactly what you have to do. That's all I have on line 21 judgment. But I do want to comment on Arsenault Wilson and Cole. And after the flood of 16, these folks got three people that I know of back in their house, brought them back in for $800. Those people were given a bid by other than engineering friends for $10,000. So those are good folks, right there, done a lot of good work for Newton, though. I appreciate the court shooting those loads. So I see that.
All right, thank you, thank you. John, are you on line?
Yes, your honor, I just unmuted.
Okay, you want to enter into the discussion also?
Yes, if, if, is there a particular question you're asking? My suggestion, and I'll discuss it with Courtney who's out today, is that any of the scrap metal that comes to the yards, unless it comes off of, like, elected commissioner Powell was talking about, off a maintainer or something along those lines, any just scrap metal that comes to the yards, we could possibly, as part of the policy, get bid reports from local salvage yards. Because any property that is sold by the county would have to be bid. And instead of doing, you know, the weekly newspaper bids and things of that nature, contact some, some of the local salvage yards and get quarterly bid prices and then allow maybe the commissioner to take that iron you've ever thought was high or not, send those bid prices to you.
You're breaking up on us, John.
I apologize, your honor.
Back up for about two sentences.
All right, my suggestion would be to contact the salvage yards and get quarterly bid pricing. And just allow the commissioners to go off those quarterly bid prices for salvage metal. And take them to the salvage yards that would actually send you a quarterly bid pack. Funds, any of the funds would have to be tracked, just like Mr. Powell said.
Okay, they, they would have to go to the commissioner general fund or the county general fund?
Well, that would depend. If it was something like Powell said, on a maintainer or something that was actually purchased through road and bridge, then it would have to go back through road and bridge. But if it's county property, it would have to go, if such a salvageable iron that was pulled out of base containers or somebody just dropped off in our company station, then that would have to go onto the general fund.
Well, I, I'm caught kind of in the middle of this and I'm not, wasn't aware of any scrap iron being sold or, or being held in their office. Evidently there it has been. I think there should be some attention drawn to that. I'm, I'm not here to, I don't think we need to set up a policy today. So I think it should be a, just, just a discussion today and then as we move forward on this item, to distinguish exactly how legally, even though Mr. Powell has drawn our attention to the local government code, I haven't had time to actually digest or, so I, I think we should actually either skip over this item or table it.
Your honor, it would be my suggestion, because I know Courtney's, Courtney has done a lot of the research on this and unfortunately she's out sick today. The information that I shared with you was just some common knowledge as far as property, once it's taken, being owned by the county and how the county could react to any property in this possession. Any property owned by the county that is sold or leased has to go through a bidding procedure. And the only way that we can build scrap metal in the future be in a salvage, pre-bid salvage process. Which, like you said, this is a discussion in the future. I'm not bigger with what we're working on. And I agree, this item could possibly be tabled.
He broke on, broke up on that last wording, our judge.
I said, I'd agree with you that this is an item that could possibly be tabled and taken up in the future.
Yes, sir. Well, I, I, I'm just thinking out loud here, I know back in the day, when the commissioner pulled out a tin horn, they left it, left out in the woods. And then, I guess later in years, maybe it's some discussion, maybe even went through the commission court, I'm not sure, that then those cupboard was unsightly to the county and maybe they need to be took for scrap iron. I, I'm kind of unknowledgeable what went on with the scrap iron and, and so, do we handle the tin horns that was scrapped from the county roads? Do we lump it with the product that came in from a household and dumped at our side? So has that all become the same thing? Solid waste handled out of dump site, so that has nothing to do, and it's assigned to a commissioner. It's not assigned to all four precincts.
Not assigned to me.
Anything that goes through solid waste should be assigned back to solid waste.
That's, that's not what the law says. The law says anything sold as salvage or scrap goes into the general fund, the road bridge fund, and/or back to the law enforcement agency if it's handling material. But that's what the law says.
But that's a difference. We're talking about two different issues. We're talking about stuff that outside residents throw in, in the dumpster at the waste sites. That's what we were speaking of then. Now, as far as what I have, old blades and all the stuff, old metal that I have, yeah, sure, it goes back to the road bridge because it comes completely out of my fund when I purchased it.
Once I put something in that dumpster and a county employee moves that dumpster along with the county, the county assumes ownership of it when people throw it in that dumpster. And when that truck, when the county employee is taking it down I T and something falls off of it, they're not going to go back to the homeowner, they're going to the county, they're going to the county because the county owned it. The law says that goes into the general fund. I think this is a critical moment for the court here, if you can just be real clear, follow the law, follow the law, put it all back in the general fund where it belongs. And when you move it about, it's real transparent, everybody see.
Well, I, I see two or three things going on here. They elected to throw this scrap iron to the side or in a dumpster, I don't know exactly how y'all do that. Or they can actually throw it in a dumpster and we can take it down to our waste management and pay for it, or putting it in landfill. Am I correct here?
That's what they used to do.
Yeah.
And I was trying to take it down, the general fund is what funds solid waste. So they're all, so if you put it back into the general fund that is funded solid waste, it's going for a reason.
Only this year did the solid waste come out of the general fund. It was coming out of our road and bridge. Solid waste come out of road and bridge until we changed it budget time last year. The commissioners was funding that out of our budget, out of our 15%.
Which comes from the taxpayers.
Which does come to, I, I understand, but it's, it normally it has, for years and years and years, it didn't come from the general fund. It come out of our 15%. The 85% is the general fund. We only receive 15% of that money to create our budget. It's all we get. In the past, they have hauled it to waste management and dumped it. Or in the past, they would let someone come in and clean it up when the pile got so high. And that probably makes better sense because you're actually helping someone anyway. All of my blades that I take off of my motor graders, which is about 8 a year, I use them for cupboard, for bucket. I drive them in the ground, the whole board of the stuff. That's, that makes sense to me, I don't do any of that. But we do haul scrap metal to the scrap metal.
And at the end of the day, I think what we're saying is, all the money that goes from scrap metal needs to go back into the treasurer's office, into the treasury fund, and not held in the offices. And then it's spent on whatever. It needs to go to Ginger's office, to the treasurer's office, and track, track inheritance. And then we need to set up our, because banks, we could do that, play with that money's track as well.
Oh, I agree. I mean, I keep records, I got all my records. So you worry about it, but it is. Every day.
So you're in compliance with 155 and all you got to do now is get in compliance with 156 by turning it back into general.
I do that.
Well, but there's certain things, because you can stick your money on.
Yeah, I do that. You think you do that.
No, I do that.
You turn it back over to the treasurer probably and wherever they put it.
Oh, yeah, I don't track it, no. Once I give it to Ginger and Christie, I don't track it. No, I don't track it. I just give it back to them. I don't know where it goes. Maybe it does go back into the general fund, I don't know, I never asked a question. It's so little, it doesn't, it's so little that.
And my mistake, we set that solid waste to separate.
We did.
Yes.
So we could track it way back there. And when y'all set your scrap metal, you bring it to, because they have to do that, that's the problem.
Yes, we have.
I know, that's what we're going.
Yes, we have been doing that.
Okay, hang on a second.
Not all of it, Sherri, tell us where we're right. Now, you said none of it. Well, don't.
Well, it is turned in. You're right, I am, but it is turned in. And we're safe.
What I'm saying was that we separated that so we could track how, how solid waste was costing all, I mean, all these years, who's done right before I started, previous project, they set it up so they could track it because it was broken. And there is a line in there for this money, say.
And there is a line in there for this money sale, something like that. And general fund funds that fund, so technically that's part of the general fund, I mean, but it, COVID says, but it's in general fund, and you go to the general fund and get it moved back over to solid waste. But it still, it was a, it's a general fund fund, and we just could have separated so that we could track it back, just to, to appear as costing.
We all agree with that. Do we have a solution? What? Do we have a solution that says, determine possible solution for irregularities? Well, I think we just discussed what we do. Everybody need their policy? I think half of us are and half of us not, with sound. So all of us, turn it into the treasurer's office.
I mean, I don't sell anything from the precinct. I don't sell anything from my office.
Not ever, neither?
No.
Neither.
Never have.
That's from the job.
And I understand what you're saying, Bubba. I get it. I understand. But normally, if you want to type a discussion, normally when we pulling up a tin horn or something out there on the county road, if somebody comes by and wants it, we just give it to them. Somebody comes by with a 16-foot lowboy, I say, what you going to do with it? Because most of the time, all the, you ain't hitting but half of it, because the rest of it rotted out. So we just rotted up and throw it on their treasure form. So I guess I'm guilty. I'm guilty of that, okay? But I don't, we didn't own it anyway. We out there replacing it, replacing it with a better one. And that, now that one becomes, well, some of them becomes the county, some of them do not. Probably 90% of my coberts that I installed, the homeowner has purchased that cobert. We don't replace driveway coberts. If somebody, what I replace is a main cobert going across the county road. If you were to call me in the morning and say, hey, Tick, I'm out here on 2107, I'm two doors up from KK, come out and replace my driveway cobert, the first thing I'm going to tell Bubba is, Bubba, go buy you a new cobert, and I really wish it would be at least 16 or 18 inches, and I really wish it would be plastic. And you're going to say, well, that's not my responsibility to do, that's the county. I'm going to tell you, if you want me to come replace that cobert, you go call, you go buy a cobert, and I will come replace it for you. When I go out there, you call me, I go out there, I install, go to digging that cobert up. Most of them are tin horn, most of them are rotted out. I'll ask that homeowner, do you want this cobert? Most of them say, no, don't pile it here. That's the first thing they come out and tell you, take that cobert, will you? Mr. Norton comes by with a 16-foot lowboy, and he's got some freezers, and he's been by everybody's house out there. Hey, Tick, what you going to do with that tin horn? I say, Mr. Norton, I'm going to get rid of it. Well, you mind if I have it? No, sir. You pull right up here, and them guys are going to load it on Mr. Norton. And I put that plastic cobert back in that you purchased, and I put a load of rock on top of it. That's the way it works in Precinct Three.
They're saying you giving away county property.
It's not county property.
You and I know that, but...
You didn't buy the cobert.
You used your people to load it.
I did.
You used your people to dig it up, so that's the county property.
But I asked that homeowner, did they want their cobert back? And they said, no.
Listen, so we're talking about a real small situation.
Correct.
So when we tear down a county barn, and we haul five different trailer roads across two counties, and we dispose of it, and it's several thousands of dollars, that money should go back into the general fund, and it has not been happened. All I'm asking the court today is to make sure that we're following the code of law. That's all I'm asking. I'm not up here saying what Tick did or what anyone else did. I'm just saying, it's not as small as a cobert, it's much larger than that, and it's known throughout the county. Or, let me back up. It's known throughout Precinct Four.
Okay. Well, I do not know what your problem is, Attorney.
Well, I just told you one of the things I'm talking about. We can talk about four of them, but let's not make light of it. I don't want people to think it's a light situation, such a cold rusty cobert. It's more than that. If we follow the code and the law, we'll all be in good place.
We just talking about what Precinct Three does. And I just told you what Precinct Three does.
I'm just asking that, if you adopt a policy, who does the code to you?
Are we going to start distinguishing scrap iron now? Or is it all under one category?
You read that code, you'll know. Go read that code and study it, because it'll tell you, Judge, it's real clear, it's so simple, that over a morning cup of coffee, you can understand.
I understand, but what you just said was, a tin horn was a different category.
No, I didn't say that. I said, we're trying to make light of it by talking about rusty cobert that Tick's handling. It's much bigger than that. But you can't say, well, this is a big money thing, we're going to handle it this way, this is a small money thing, we're going to handle it this way.
That county barn you're talking about.
The law is, the law is the law, and we have to follow it. We don't follow it as a governing body. And how can we go out here and start talking about standards of conduct and on policy? We got to follow the law, the court. We haven't been doing that.
That's what I want to make clear of what you just said. There's things of barn or some large piece of metal versus a small piece of metal. Metal's metal.
Exactly. Your point, Judge, I understood, you're correct.
I just want to make sure we would all put it in the same category.
That county barn was bought from the county with insurance money that you're talking about. Now, I don't know, it actually belonged to the insurance company. But now, when I touched it and tore it down, it becomes county's, using the money. And the money didn't go for personal use to begin with. It went back into the county. It's in the county's treasure right now.
It is now.
Yeah, it is.
It wasn't months ago.
Yeah, you know, you know that.
Your Honor, if I may say something?
Yes, yes, sir.
I think you need to just go ahead and table out a future discussion, but anything that the county owns, anything, it doesn't matter what it is, anything that the county owns, it could be as little as a paperclip. If it's sold, it's got to be bid out, and it's got to be accounted for. There actually be policies in place to deal with that.
Okay.
So I suggest you table it for future discussion, and so that everybody could be on the exact same page with every single item that comes in and every single item that goes out. I apologize, I can't...
Would you like to follow that recommendation?
Yes.
I make a motion that we table this item, have a plan and further discussion, so we can come up with a solution. Your second?
Yes.
Motion been made by Mr. White and Second Mr. Vincent, we table item number 21 in discussion. Not all in favor, say aye. Same sign of opposition. Hear none, pass. Number 22, discussing appropriate except annual report from auditor in the court with Texas Local Code, Government Code 114 dash point 025. Ms.... Ms. Auditor?
I guess I'm saying this on the agenda. I wasn't aware of it. It hasn't been done. I reached out to our county clerk, and he's been in the past in the years. And I also reached out to these two judges, and they've never received one. So I think right now, I'll reach out to outside lawyers to help me out with this, because I'm without proper training, which I was not trained to cooperate, and I've never, I'm asking for extension of this, as a permission.
How much, how much time would you have, Bill?
Well, I'm working on this right now, so if it's any...
Would it be possible that we have a special before the end of the month? Okay, I recommend that we just pass over item number 22. And go to item number 23, that's extended the COVID-19 disaster declaration to May the 9th, 2022. Likewise, on a hurricane laurel disaster declaration to May the 9th. And also extending the new tornado disaster to the May the 9th, unless otherwise y'all want to distinguish each one of them apart. I make that motion. All three of them together.
Second?
Motion been made by Mr. White and Second Mr. Fongby.
No, ma'am.
Mr. Fongby, that we extend these decorations to May the 9th, 2022. Any discussion? Not all in favor, say aye. Oppose, same sign. Hear none, pass. Number 26 is Mr. Moore would pay the bill, or Mr. Dubon?
General Fund, $676,277.55. District Attorney State Fund, $2,501.99. Road and Bridge General, $34,143.70. Road and Bridge Precinct One, $46,500, I'm sorry, $257.25. Road and Bridge Precinct Two, $28,292.31. Road and Bridge Precinct Three, $65,652.61. Road and Bridge Precinct Four, $23,294.38. Courthouse Security, $69.73. V A W Grant, $5,265.92. Commissioner Special Precinct One, $36,825.65. Commissioner Special Precinct Two, $63,899.42. Commissioner Special Precinct Three, $48,764.79. Dedicated Road Precinct Two, oh, I'm sorry, I skipped Commissioner Special Precinct Four, Dedicated Road Precinct Two, $3,401.64. Record Preservation, $2,444.66. Sheriff's Contraband, $500. Solid Waste Disposal, $25,078.10. Voter Registration, $7,115.67. Newton County Library, $13,442.88. Historical Operating, $4,519.10. Rents, $2,236.7. Newton County Enterprise Facility, $14,459.47. Technology Fund, $290.12. For a total of all funds of $1,222,150.28.
Stand by.
Your motion?
Make that motion.
Motion been made by Mr. Fongby and Second Mr. White, we paid the bills of $1,222,250.28. Any discussion? Not all in favor, say aye. O, same sign. Hear none, pass. Your motion to adjourn.
Okay, motion.
Motion been made by Mr. White and Second Mr. Fongby, adjourn, 12:45.